To the Planning Commission this February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. We welcome all of you and thank you for coming. We will start with the Pledge Allegiance by Commissioner Redding and then our opening remarks by Commissioner Martino.
If everyone could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, on this night, we ask that we would have Thy counsel and help as we discuss the workings of Pleasant Grove City, as we decide how to mold the future of the lots and properties and how to develop our city, that we would keep in mind the needs of the residents, the developers, the needs of the city, that we'd be able to find a balance in all the things that we will be hearing and discussing this night. And we say zings in the name of Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, I will, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner.
I told you that's the hardest thing.
I did write down your name, that's why. Commissioner Phillips and a second from Commissioner Redding. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? All right, that passes. Do I have a motion for the staff reports?
I move that we approve tonight's staff reports.
I second.
All right, I have a motion to pass it from Commissioner Fugel and a second from Commissioner Martino. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, that passes. Now I'll take a motion for, or no, sorry. Do we have any declaration of conflicts or abstentions from commissioners?
No.
All right, not seeing any, we'll proceed forward. Just a couple of things I want to mention to the public that if you look at the agenda, there's a couple of different types. We have items number one and two, which are public meetings, and then item number three and four, which are public hearings. Just to explain the difference, a public meeting is where we will open it up to the commissioners and hear from the applicant, but we don't necessarily open it up to the public. So just so you know, on the public hearings, we will open it up to the public. So proceeding forward, we'll start with item number one, which is the preliminary subdivision plat located.
So not necessarily, but it's up to you, if you consider it appropriate, you still can open it to the public.
Right, right. I'm just, okay. So yes, item number one, preliminary subdivision plat, which is a public meeting to consider the request of Castlewood Development for a fourteen lot preliminary residential subdivision plat called Sienna Heights, plat A, on eleven point three eight acres, approximately located at one thirty-one west, eighteen hundred north, in the proposed R one dash ten, single-family residential zone. Jacob, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Jacob Hawkins from the Planning Department. So the first item is a fourteen lot preliminary subdivision plat called Sienna Heights, plat A. This property is located at approximately one thirty-one west, eighteen hundred north. This property is surrounded by a single-family residences and a park. The park to the south is zoned rural residential, and the properties to the west are zoned R one eight, single-family residential, and the properties to the north are zoned R one twenty, also single-family residential. On January twenty-fifth, the applicant for this subdivision appeared before the Planning Commission to rezone a portion of their proposed subdivision to the R one ten, single-family residential zone. And that would be this area right here. Now, this image was taken before we had been able to update our zoning map, so it's still a reflection of a residential here, but this section right here.
Jacob, so the item for the rezon just went to city council the day before yesterday. So that's why we didn't have time to change that zone. It takes a little bit longer, but you guys forwarded a recommendation of approval, and a city council last Tuesday, it was approved. So it's not a proposed R one ten zone anymore, it's an approved R one ten. But at the time when we sent the notices, it was proposed because we didn't know what the result was going to be. But as of the day before yesterday, it's in the R one ten zone now.
Thank you, Dan. Now, the existing church on the proposed lot, on its proposed lot after subdivision, wood is still in the rural residential zone, how it used to be, while all new lots here are now, as Daniel said, in that new zone. So as Daniel said, the rezon was heard by city council on February sixth, was approved from there. Here's the plat itself. So this rezon amended the lot requirements for new residential lots in this area. So the previous zone, the rural residential zone, required a half acre per lot. And in this new R one ten zone, where all of these residences will be, each of those lots are only required to be ten thousand square feet. And as such, they were able to squeeze fourteen lots in for this whole subdivision. Now, you'll notice lots five and nine, which are these two right here at the top of the cul-de-sac, these two lots are below the typical width requirements or below the typical required area of the zones. And lot five in particular is below the width requirements of the zone. However, for zoning ordinances, up to twenty-five percent of those lots are permitted to be smaller than the standard minimum lot area or lot width required by the zone. Lots being averaged may be reduced to not less than eighty percent of the standard minimum lot area required in the zone. And the lot width may also be reduced to a center minimum width requirement of the next less restricted zone. So in short, lots five and nine are permitted to be a minimum of eight thousand square feet and have a minimum width of eighty-five feet. And the applicant meets, meets these requirements.
City Planner? It's not just a reduction, it's an averaging, meaning that if you have a lot that is smaller, then you've got to provide a lot that is bigger than. So it's an average, it's not that you just get a reduction of twenty-five percent of the lot, it's you get to average twenty-five percent of the lots.
And to that note, these lots in the back also help towards that average because each of those lots are much larger than what the zone width has been required. With that being said, the lot area, the lot width, lot frontage, and yard requirements are met, and the submitted plans comply with the existing requirements for the R one ten zone and for subdivisions. And staff recommends approval of the proposed subdivision. I do have one last note I would like to make before I turn the time back over. I did want to mention that as the applicant moves forward with their subdivision, staff can only issue up to twenty-five percent of the building permits until all of the required improvements have been completed for this project.
So those improvements include, it's the road improvements that you're talking about?
Yeah, road improvements, stormwater. We actually have a whole list of them on our website. I would love to go over those if you would like to look at them. But ultimately, if all improvements are, or when all improvements have been completed, then we can issue all the permits.
Let's pull up the, let's pull up the list, it's in our code. And while you do that, I'm just going to paraphrase what staff recommends, approval of the preliminary plat, okay? So not, not the plat, the final plat, of the preliminary plat at this point. That's what we're having this meeting, that's what we amended the code last time. So what we're looking at today is a preliminary plat, okay? The final plat will be approved by the staff, by a city engineer or public works director. So but for this meeting right now, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat. Now, you guys are going to see a list right there of the improvements that need to be completed at one point, and do have two lists, and you can explain the list, Jacob.
Yeah, so this is the first list. If all of these improvements have been completed, then we will be able to issue twenty-five percent of the building permits at that time, once these ones are done. Stormwater, sewer, water, road base, curb gutter, gas line, street signs. And then when the remaining improvements have been completed, stormwater basin, it require electrical lines, gas lines, sidewalk, final road asphalt, street lighting. When all of that is completed, then we'll be able to issue the remaining building permits for these ones.
So for clarification for this project, stormwater basin, will that be required? No? Okay.
Any other questions?
Sorry, that was a no, just for the record.
For the record.
The engineer shook his head and said no. One other thing also to mention, just, I mean, it's right along the same lines of these. We can issue the twenty-five percent permits, but no certificates of occupancy will be granted until all of the items are complete as well. So they can start building the first few, you know, first twenty-five percent, but they can't get any certificates of occupancy until all items are complete.
Okay. New processes, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jacob?
What is the measurement on the frontage for those back three lots? I can't, yeah, sorry, it's, I can even zoom in, but it's blurry.
Specifically, and I think lot number seven would be the one in question.
Lot five, C thirteen, that's lot number seven you were looking at?
Yeah.
Yep.
Six, seven, and eight.
That was C thirteen, I believe?
I think it was five, six, seven.
C.
Yeah, C thirteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. They do meet the requirements. I remember looking at that.
Radius of fifty-six feet?
Can you explain, City Planner, please, the difference between lot frontage and lot width?
Yes. So lot frontage is the width of the lot directly along the right-of-way. And then the lot width, per our definitions, we go back fifty feet into the lot and we take the cross measurement there, from one property line to the other. And that way, when it comes to things such as cul-de-sac, we're not requiring that fifty-foot requirement, the lot width requirement of, I think it's ninety feet in this zone, we're not requiring that right along the right-of-way quarter, it's back into the lot a little bit more, and that's why we can deal with multiple lots on cul-de-sac.
So in a rectangle lot, the lot width and lot frontage will be the same, correct? Because this is the line adjacent to a public right-of-way. When we have like a piece of pie type of situation, the lot that has the shape of a triangle, then one thing is the frontage, which is the longitude along the right-of-way, and we measure in a perpendicular line, ninety-degree angle, from there back fifty feet, and from there we measure the lot width, so that's how we do it.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Jacob. All right, is the applicant here? If you'd like to come forward, remember to state your name.
My name is Kayla Craft, and I'm here representing Castlewood Development. Thank you for all of your time. Staff's summary was wonderful. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you guys have want to. The subdivision we did do, it sounds like there are so many questions about the looks like lots we have in some home lot bits, just to make sure that the home footprints and how they relate to one another and how the place will be acceptable to a buyer, really. And those lots, the way that they've been preliminarily laid out, will actually be the premium lots. They will have substantial backyards and a really nice entrance.
It's actually a very similar design, just to the east, on the other side of the church building.
I'm also happy to come up again if there are questions that maybe come up during the public discussion for you guys to have any questions.
So just kind of out of curiosity, so on the east side, the cul-de-sac that's on the east side of this, you know, the, right at the base, it's split in two instead of three. It's just, I assume that it's return on investment to have another, or?
Yeah, I don't know if, I'm not as familiar with that project. I did pull that plaque.
Yeah.
And I was doing my diligence to figure out some things, but I don't know why they chose that to be. I don't know if the organs changed. I know that for us, the cul-de-sac link was a key design factor for us, because we couldn't extend it in the hours.
Okay.
All right, thank you, any other questions? All right, thank you, we appreciate it. All right, well, as Daniel said, we can't open it to the public, so let's open it for just a short time and have a couple people, if you want to approach podium, state your name. Please.
Hello, Planning Commission, my name's Terry Taylor, thank you for your time. I do have some questions.
Can you check and see if the microphone is on? Is there a green light?
It is a green light.
Okay. Thank you.
There you go.
Oh, okay. That's better, yeah.
All right, so have some questions. And you, Dustin, referenced the cul-de-sac to the east of there. It is different just in that cul-de-sac area where they have tried to put three lots instead of two. My concern over that was just, I don't see how the front of the homes are going to really be able to fit facing the street. Are they going to have to be at an angle? That was just one concern I had. The other concern, and the engineer is here, but just wondering about, about how the water and the drainage is going to work in that subdivision. All of us who have lived there thirty years know that the water table there is very high, and we just want to make sure that, however they've engineered it, that there won't be any drainage, anything running into our yards or homes. And so would love to have an explanation as to what that will be.
And I know Aaron was talking to me earlier, or they, I'll just turn it over to you, Aaron.
Sure, Chair, thank you, Commissioners, public. I looked at the geotechnical report that they had, actually shows that in this particular area, the groundwater seems to be a little bit lower than I'd expect, because I do understand, I've seen a lot of groundwater problems that are there. But one thing they're doing is they're building up the roadway. So the roadway, all the drainage from the roadway will slope out, so it'll all drain out to eighteen hundred north. So none of the water from the roadway will ever be able to fall back in and flood someone else. And then they have, the developer and their engineer have gone through it, and on every single lot, they're putting in a swale that will detain the water within each lot. And they'll have to, they'll have to implement some of that immediately because of the disturbance of the ground. And those swales and other things may get disturbed while they're building the homes, but then they'll have to reinstate those when the final homes are built.
Okay. Thank you. What happens if during this process, our homes have flooding? What is our process of how we would handle that?
That's a good question. Is that on the city, is that on the developer?
Chair, I can take that one. That's really an issue that would be a private issue between you and the developer. Developer hopes that there's not going to be a problem, and in theory, there won't be a problem. They work hard, we work with them. We have our SWIP members that manage the SWIP stuff with Public Works, that will be out there monitoring their site regularly and informing them of deficiencies of things that need to be taken care of with regard to that. And so there should not be any issues, but if there are, that would become a private matter between the two parties, just like anywhere else in the city, you know. I mean, no, our code and our ordinance doesn't allow anyone to discharge water from their site to another property. And so they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be allowed to do that, but there's, but it becomes a private matter, a private dispute between you and them, not the city so much. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's helpful.
All right, one more question. As far as that cul-de-sac area, as they stated, they fit the homes. You know, they did some research to see how the homes would fit. My question is, are they having to fit them so that they are not facing the road? Or can a home fit on those properties and actually face the frontage of the road? Okay.
Ultimately, yeah, they can, but they can also build it how they want to within this building envelope. And so anywhere within that envelope, they can build the home. And it could be an odd-shaped home, it could be a normal-sized home, but you could probably build a house on each of these with the front facing the cul-de-sac.
Maybe set back a little bit farther from the front than might be normal to be able to fit it in that, but there will be a design.
That would work.
Yeah.
They have to follow the city regulations and all the setbacks and all that. Yeah.
Is there any scenario where you would say, let's try the other plan that's in the cul-de-sac to the east?
That's not our prerogative. It's the builder and how they've laid it out. If it's within the code, they can build those lots how they want. We cannot tell them how to divide it, as long as they're within the right regulations and rules and the frontages that are set. Like, I can't go in and tell you what you can do on your property. You know, there's some things we just can't do, and that's because it's a private property. And so we assume that they would do everything within the ordinances. If they don't, then they will be shut down.
Okay, thank you. No, thank you. All right, we'll take one other comment, if anybody wants to come forward. All right, let's bring it back up to the commissioners for a discussion. Or a motion? Don't all speak at once?
I'll go ahead and move. The Planning Commission approved the request for Castlewood Development for a preliminary subdivision plat called Sienna Heights, plat A, located approximately one thirty-one west, eighteen hundred north, on property zoned rural residential and R one ten, and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report, subject to all engineering, fire, and codes approved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Phillips and a second from Commissioner Butler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, that motion passes. We'll move on to our second item, which is also a public meeting to consider the administrative request of Steven Ruff, or Steve Ruff, sorry, for a two lot.
Roof? Yeah.
Two lot preliminary residential subdivision plat called Young Estates, plat B, on point nine six acres, located at eighteen twenty north, one hundred east, in the R one dash twenty, single-family residential zone. All right, Jacob, we'll turn it over to you.
All righty, thank you, Madam Chairman. All right, so this second item is a two lot preliminary subdivision called Young Estates, plat B. This property is located at eighteen twenty north, one hundred east, in the R one twenty, single-family residential zone. In August two thousand and twenty-three, the applicant applied for a zone change from the rural residential zone to the R one twenty zone, so he'd be able to meet the requirements for the lot area and lot width for a subdivision. Here is the zoning map. This one has been updated since. So the subject property is currently developed with a single-family residence. The properties to the north and west are zoned rural residential. The property to the west is zoned R one twenty, and the property to the south is zoned R one twelve. And all surrounding properties have been developed with single-family residences. So each lot in the R one twenty zone is required to have a minimum of twenty thousand square feet per lot. The applicant meets this requirement, as well as the width requirements and all other requirements of the R one twenty zone, and also for subdivisions. And because the proposed plat meets the requirements for subdivisions in the R one twenty zone, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the proposed preliminary plat with the conditions that all final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met. We can take any questions.
Thank you, Jacob. Any questions for Jacob? No? All right, thank you, we appreciate it. All right, is the applicant here? No? All right. I guess to be fair, we'll let, you know, one or two come up if you want to. We'll open it for a public hearing. All right. Seeing that no one's jumping to come up, we'll bring it back up to the commissioners and for discussion or a motion. I'll make a motion.
I had a quick question, if that's okay. Sorry, not to like rain on the parade of the motion. So this lot here will likely have access onto eighteen hundred north, I take it. And is there any plan to have this lot? Because I know in the past, we've tried to limit access onto eighteen hundred north from the subdivisions going into the east of here. And there's quite a bit of land, farmland right now, with horses and things that the family may develop. Are, is there a plan to have both of those enter onto eighteen hundred or just the one?
So currently, the corner lot, which has the existing home, has access directly off of one hundred east.
Right.
And the applicant hasn't requested to change that access, although from a traffic standpoint and from a standpoint of the city, the, for one hundred east is, it's technically a collector, but it would be maybe a major collector or really, it really functions as an arterial road in this area. So in this case, we would actually prefer that the access be on eighteen hundred north, if it makes sense. But in this case, we don't, you know, we wouldn't require that access to change unless there was something where they decided that the homeowner, whenever the time would be, would decide that they want to demolish that home and build a new home, or do an addition that is, you know, so much, or whatever. There's certain, there's certain trigger events that would trigger them to require them to change that access. But at this time, there's no, there's no plan, and the developer has not had any plan of changing that access. And then, similar to your discussion before about how we can't control things, this is kind of the only way this property can develop by itself. And so the one property would have, would be required to have access onto eighteen hundred north, because there's not another street that it has frontage on.
Yeah, you're talking this property, and that makes sense.
There's no other option there. So they would get access directly onto eighteen hundred north, but, but the, but the corner lot would stay the way it is today unless they did make some other sort of change to trigger that need.
What would be the instruction as, I mean, looking at the vicinity plan and everything else for that area, as the other homes and lots get developed along eighteen hundred north?
So that just depends on how they develop. I haven't looked at the vicinity plan myself. I'm more than happy to have a more detailed conversation with you, because that's not really applicable to this item. I'm happy to have a detailed conversation with you.
But it is setting a precedent.
Yeah, I don't think this sets a precedent, because it's very specific. What the code says about access is, if there's another way to access not on the collector, which is eighteen hundred north, then you must access on the collector. If there is no other way, in the case like this, then there's no access. So when those other properties develop, we would have a discussion with those developers, and they would need to come up with a plan of how, you know, how they're going to situate lots and things like that that we would have to feel comfortable with as far as whether they have access on eighteen hundred or whether they have a loop road or something that goes through that would provide, you know, backyards on eighteen hundred north, and then they would have access off of another street in the subdivision. But at that point, at the preliminary plat stages, when we would determine where those roads and things are going to go with those future developers, and then we would, and then we would do that with them.
That's a landlot right there. Yeah.
Thank you, Aaron.
The other question I would have is the neighbor there to the side of them. That is a very deep lot that is, would have no access except from going around the house to get to the back of that lot at that point. It kind of landlocks that one, which isn't part of this discussion, but it would affect that neighbor.
On the south side?
Yes. The neighbor on the south side.
On the south or the north?
I think that he's referring to the neighbor on the north side of this lot.
North side?
They have a deep lot there, yeah.
Yeah, that's a deep lot with no access except going around the house at this point, once that is done. Because it appears, it looks like they accessed across the back of the neighbor's property from what, at least that's what the aerial appears to be, but. Yeah, they do currently.
So I can probably answer a little bit of that. So this, the person to the north, they have their property, and their current property meets the zoning ordinances. If they want to do anything with their property in the future, like if they want to do a flag lot, they would have to meet those requirements at that time. Currently, we have an application to amend the flag lot requirements. That makes it a little bit more difficult to do flag lots. And in this case, because of the zone that it's in, I don't think either way.
No, it wouldn't be developed, that's what I'm saying, is it would.
Right.
That's what I'm saying is it would, it's, it's, it would never be changed from what's current purpose.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. We'll take a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion. I move the planning commission approve the request of seafreep for a subdivision plat called Young Estates Plat B located eighteen twenty north one hundred east on property zone R dash twenty single family residential zone and adopting the exhibits, con- conditions and findings of the staff report.
Yeah, a second.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Redding and a second from Commissioner Butler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, that motion passes. We'll go on to item number three, which is a public hearing to consider the request of McKay Christensen for a conditional use permit for joint parking between residential and commercial uses located approximately two hundred and thirty-eight South Pleasant Grove Boulevard in the Grove Zone, Commercial Sales Sub District. Jacob, I'll turn it over to you again.
All righty. All right, so this item is for McKay Christensen and his project at approximately two thirty-eight South Pleasant Grove Boulevard. Um, here's an aerial image, uh, for the property in question. Um, and his project goes beyond the boundaries of what is shown here. His project in total includes these townhomes up here, over here, and this lot as well. But for tonight's, um, meeting for the conditional use for joint parking, it's just this area in blue that is, um, that we're considering. And here's the zoning as well. This property is zoned the Grove Commercial Sales Zone and it has, uh, the Boulevard Mixed Use overlay on that. Okay, I'm gonna start off here, I believe. All right, so this, uh, the applicant and his team have been working with the city for the past couple of years on large develop, on a large development project right off of Pleasant Grove Boulevard that involves townhomes, apartments and commercial buildings. You may have seen this project being worked on in the past, um, as the townhomes that they have been working on have now been constructed. The next portion of this project that the applicant is working on is their proposed apartment buildings. The applicant is proposing to have two apartment buildings, as you can see here, uh, that contain a total of one hundred ninety-four residential units. One hundred seventy of those units, um, will be one bedroom units and twenty-four of those units will be two bedroom apartments. In total, these apartments will need to have three hundred forty-six parking spaces based on their, on the requirements of the Boulevard Mixed Use overlay, which requires one point seven five parking spaces for every one bedroom apartment and two parking spaces for every two bedroom apartment. Um, so I'll explain where this requirement comes from, but before I get to that, I'll finish explaining what the applicant's request is and what the proposed plans are. So the applicant has provided a parking plan which outlines where each of these spaces will be, which you can see here. Uh, most of the residential parking will be behind the apartments in this gated area back here. And also, aside note, all of the comments that are on, um, this parking plan, uh, have been provided by staff. The only thing that was provided by the applicant was, uh, the site plan itself with the different colors where each parking is gonna be. So there are two hundred eighteen spaces in the back here and the required one hundred twenty-eight spaces will be in front of the apartments along here. And it includes these pink areas as well, which is where the applicant is proposing the joint parking spaces to be. Um, overall, this parking takes up a lot of, or or, uh, let me back up a little bit. Um, the, uh, parking for these apartment buildings are behind the sixty-four foot residential buffer from Pleasant Grove Boulevard. Um, overall, this parking takes up a lot of space and the applicant is requesting a conditional use for joint parking between the residential and commercial uses, since altogether, there may near, there may not be enough parking spaces to fulfill every uses parking requirements. And it becomes even harder to meet those parking requirements while still meeting the open space requirements for this development project. The applicant is required to have a minimum of twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial space for this project. At this time, no.
It's not commercial spaces, uh, sales tax and rating space.
Yes.
Retail.
Retail, retail and restaurants. At this time, no plans have been formally submitted to the city to review any of these commercial buildings except for the commercial property on the other side of one hundred south, uh, which would provide for its own parking lot. Uh, barring the requirements for that lot and only focusing on the maximum possible, uh, parking requirements for the four commercial buildings in this area, there could be up to one hundred forty-six parking spaces required for this commercial portion. Combined with the residential requirement, that would mean that the city would require four hundred ninety-two parking spaces overall just for this area alone. At this time, the applicant provides for four hundred fifty-three parking spaces in this area, which is thirty-nine spaces short of what could be required. So a moment to discuss on how staff arrived at our calculations. Um, we went through each of these buildings, these four buildings, and we, um, determined if they would be, uh, retail, we would take their overall footprint and divide it by two hundred, uh, because the parking space for retail in this area is one space for every two hundred square feet of gross floor area. And if restaurant, because we don't have floor plans yet, um, we just did point seven five of the floor, of of the total floor area. Um, just to, because we don't ex, we don't include kitchens or storage or things like that, it's just the dining area. Um, or the amount of chairs that they have, um, is what determines that that parking space. So we just did point seven five of each of those buildings and we came up with a number, uh, at a parking ratio of one to one hundred for that. So, uh, for example, uh, this blue one, uh, we calculated at about five thousand square feet. So they would have, um, thirty-eight spaces, um, required if they went for restaurant in this area or twenty-five spaces if they went for retail, um, where here they just provide twenty-two.
How many for a restaurant, you said?
Thirty-eight. We did, uh, doing the point seven five of five thousand.
But that, just at the end, but keep on going and then you answer.
Okay. Anyway, naturally, as the commercial portions are submitted for review and their uses are established, this parking requirement will decrease. Um, however, with the amount of parking required by the apartments and without a joint parking agreement, the commercial buildings would be limited by what space remains and may not be able to meet their twenty-five thousand square foot requirement and still meet their required parking or open space. So while staff reviewed these provided plans, additional thought was given to how much parking is used by residential uses, not just by the code, but in actuality. Um, so apartment units, regardless of size, are permitted to be used by a single family. According to the zoning ordinances, a family consists of one person living alone, two or more persons related by blood, marriage, adoption, or so on, or up to four related or unrelated persons living as a single housekeeping unit. Staff typically requires each residential unit, be it apartments, houses or townhomes, to have a minimum of two parking spaces. Oftentimes, in higher density areas, this requirement is not quite enough to meet the demand for residential parking. For example, we went out to the townhomes, uh, that are in this development. Uh, these are the Boulevard one twenty townhomes, uh, which were constructed at the beginning of this project. Uh, each of these townhomes have a two car garage. Um, and in addition to that, there are twenty-one additional parking spaces within the development for residents or visitors. Yet these townhomes still generate enough parking where cars are parked in the streets along one hundred south and in the undeveloped area where these apartment, apartments and commercial areas are intended to go. Let me come back here. So when this overlay was established, a parking ratio of one point seven five spaces was permitted for one bedroom units to allow some flexibility in the design of the project, uh, be it parking spaces for residents or visitors. Um, these apartments must have all three hundred forty-six parking spaces if all one hundred ninety-four, uh, apartments are built. In the worst case scenario, if the apartments are instead occupied by multiple adults, each with their own cars and a visitor, you know, three forty-six parking spaces may not be enough, um, similar to the townhomes and may start spreading out further. Um, if we, if all required parking is not accounted for at the times when these apartments will be in use, it may negatively in, uh, impact the commercial businesses. Um, and at that point, any commercial buil- building affected by the, uh, the joint parking will need to modify their hours to make room for the apartments to meet their requirements. And that leads me to the requirements for joint parking in the Grove Zone. Section ten fourteen nineteen C two notes that the planning commission may authorize the joint use of a parking facility in a mixed use development when the applicant can demonstrate that no more than forty percent of the required parking for the proposed land use is provided in a joint off-site parking facility. There is not a, uh, there is not a conflict between the principal operating hours of the land uses which share the joint parking facility. The joint parking spaces are no farther than five hundred feet from the facility or buildings directly served, and there is at least one clear and easy pedestrian route. And the parties concerned in the joint use of the parking facility shall submit a written agreement specifying the terms of the agreement for the sharing of the parking facility. Said agreement shall be recorded in the office of the county recorder and shall become a permanent part of public record. So to the above requirements, staff requests the planning commission discuss nighttime versus daytime uses. Uh, with twenty-five thousand square feet of retail or or restaurant, commercial uses, the parking for these uses typically extend into later hours than office uses would. With later hours of restaurant or retail uses, it will likely be that many of the parking spaces intended for apartment use may be disputed between the residents and customers for these businesses. So while the zoning ordinances for the Grove Commercial Sales Sub District state that the joint use of parking facilities is desirable and encouraged in this zone, staff recommends that either the continuation or denial of the proposed conditional use permit. Staff recommends the planning commission deny or continue the proposed conditional use permit for joint parking based on the provision that the parking for the apartments may be met with the current site plan and subdivision plat and that the future commercial businesses are yet to be determined in terms of use and square footage. The city requires a minimum of twenty-five thousand square feet of the overall development area to be de- uh, designated for sales tax generating use, uh, commercial uses, um, which would be first, which should first be firmly established and parking calculated before joint parking is approved. I can take any questions.
Are any of these buildings approved?
Not at this time. We are only in the reviewing phase of the, this project at this time. So yeah, none of these have been approved yet.
So Jacob, what is the, uh, parking requirement for retail? One per each square foot? My calculation is it's two hundred, two hundred square feet?
Yeah, two hundred square feet, I believe. Let me go ahead and just pull that up, though.
Okay.
Retail stores, one to two hundred. And then if they have additional floors, it turns to one to four hundred for those additional floors.
So, okay. So in this situation, it would be, that would be a solution for fewer, right? I guess.
Um, Jacob, can you, uh, can you answer about how you come up with the point seventy-five? Is that a number that you, uh, work in as, it's just a proposal that you have?
Um, yeah, so that point seven five, uh, whenever we were looking at these, uh, buildings, um, my first instinct was to just go for the maximum amount of parking that could possibly happen in any of these because we don't know what those uses are going to be just yet. Um, with drive-throughs for this blue one and for this red one, um, those are likely to be restaurant. And this one, the gray one, um, we know for sure will be, um, a restaurant at this time. Um, but whenever we calculate the requirements for restaurants, we don't include the kitchen or storage or things like that. It's dependent on, um, it's, it's a square, uh, it's, the parking ratio is one space for every one hundred square feet of gross floor area for like the dining area excluding the kitchen and storage and all that. Or one space for every three point five chairs that are in the dining room essentially.
So you said, you mentioned earlier that for restaurants, you typically do point seven five, so three quarters of the square footage is.
For preliminary.
That's a proposal from, uh, from the city planner, though. So, uh, now, assuming that the city planner is not a restauranteer, a different number, a different, uh, ratio can be used. Okay, so he he proposed point seventy-five, uh, just a quick Google, it shows point sixty, but again, I'm, I don't have a restaurant. It could be, could be point five, could be something like that. I think it's good for the, for the applicant to.
So this is, so this is, this is a good way to get like worst ca, like what you said earlier, worst case scenario.
Exactly, so I think he went to the worst case scenario, correct?
So therefore, that that would explain the the thirty-eight on on the blue. That would, that would explain thirty-eight, uh, parking spaces required for that one.
Number that kind of helps with calculations as well. But, yeah, as we go through the actual floor plans and the site plans and we know what the uses are going to be, that will actually determine what those, um, parking requirements are gonna be and it will likely go down.
In essence, what what would be beneficial is knowing what those are going to be.
Yes.
Right? So the blue, the gray, the the pink, if we know what those are gonna be, then it's a much easier for a city for us to determine this is the required parking that we can, that we are working with.
Right.
Than just speculation.
And that's where my recommendation comes in of continuation or denial. Um, because at this time, the applicant is mostly working on the apartments at this time, which they're able to meet. Um, if they plot it and just go in with the apartments. But, um, at that point, if we don't know what the commercial is gonna be, it would be a good idea to figure out what those uses will be and then come back with a solid this number.
That's very helpful, thank you, Jacob.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Jacob, appreciate it. All right, is the applicant here? If you'd like, you can come forward, just state your name.
Hi, McKay Christensen, uh, the applicant. So, um, couple things. We, um, are, we, so, I'm trying to think of where to begin. We meet the code. Jacob and I have spent several hours going through this plan over and over and over again. And, um, we've sent a plan over to Jacob. I don't have it on me right now, but it it is this very plan here. Does this work?
So we can make it bigger.
Does this work, Jacob? Okay.
Well, that doesn't make it bigger, let's just go, oh, yeah.
That's as big as it gets.
So, um, basically what we're asking for is this. We have laid out, we've, we've taken the time carefully, we have spent hours and hours and hours with our engineer to determine exactly how much parking we have to have for all of our residential and all of our commercial. Uh, we're restaurant operators. We own Beaumont Bakery. I don't know if you've ever been to Beaumont Bakery before up in Salt Lake City, but it's, it's phenomenal. It's really, it does, it does fantastic. We're bringing Beaumont Bakery here. So Beaumont Bakery, uh, about six.
Can you point again where you're bringing Beaumont Bakery, cause I don't think that.
Right here. Again, we are the owner of the restaurant, we're bringing it right here. So we can confirm that we're gonna bring Beaumont Bakery here. Um, right now, the only plat that we do have in is the apartments, but it's only because we're going through this exercise of trying to figure out parking, parking and open space. So the plan that I submitted to Daniel and Jacob, we meet without equivocation all of our open space and all of our parking requirements. But I'm not quite sure why Jacob has miscalculated these at point seven five. I don't know where he came up with that ratio, being a restaurant owner, I know that point six oh.
So I don't think he miscalculated at point seven five, you just disagree with him using that ratio.
I completely disagree with him using that ratio.
There's a difference there. He didn't miscalculate, the numbers are right.
Well, he.
Using point seven five versus point six versus point five.
I guess that's true. But we have gone through this for the past, I've been working on this map for, I don't know, the last two years with Daniel and we've never once used a ratio above point six five, ever. So this is the first time I've heard of that. So when it comes to, the other thing is, is that while we have to have twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial retail, we can determine exactly how much restaurant we want to have and how much retail we want to have. Right now, we've chosen to divide it fifty fifty. We've got basically fifty percent of our overall square. We've got basically fifty percent of our overall square footage is dedicated to restaurant and the other fifty percent is dedicated to retail. By doing that, we perfectly park all of the residential, all of the restaurant, all of the retail. Sign sealed delivered. I could go turn that all in today and we could go build all of it.
Based on your estimates of needed parking, not, not our city's estimate?
Based off code, based off code. I could today turn in a plat for all of the apartments, all of the retail, go fifty percent of this space as restaurant, and we would absolutely meet code and we're, we're on our way. Okay? The one caveat, here's the one caveat. We had three stalls here, five stalls there, sorry, six stalls there and two stalls there. The whole ask, this is our whole ask, we sat down-
McKay, can I interrupt you for a second? I have a question, just so we can calculate really quick. So what you're saying is that each one of the commercial buildings, the way you calculated is half of the building retail, half of the building restaurant, and the restaurant a point six, point six. Is that correct?
And we've gone through that ad nauseam. And, and so to make sure, because our whole objective was we've got to make sure we park it and we've got to make sure that we have open space. We have spent hours and hours and hours coming down to like funneling it down to this whole thing. And so we got there and I said, Jacob, Daniel, we park it. We completely park it. We could turn in our plats, go, and we're done. However, what we're asking, this is the whole reason why we're here, is we're saying, can we eliminate those three stalls to create outdoor patio space? Those six stalls to create outdoor patio space? And two stalls right here to give a little breathing room on the side of the building because as you drive in, this is what you get. Like you're looking right at that. So rather than have these two stalls right up against the building we wanted to do to landscape it up, right? Give it some breathing room. That is literally the only reason that we are here. We're looking for eleven stalls. We want to take away, create, in fact, our open space calculation goes up because that turns to open space instead of stalls. That turns to open space instead of stalls, and so does that. This, knowing that we're going to bring in Beaumont Bakery into that location, we want the outdoor patio space. And I'll show you a rendering of, a video of what our architect has put together to show you what it is that we're looking for there. But it's important to us. You know, we, the patio space is important to us and that's why we're pushing it, both for that and for this location. And then the other two stalls, like I said, were to just make it feel better. It has, again, I, I don't know where all of these calculations have come from. I'm just telling you, I know for certain that I can park it today. One hundred percent factual. And if, and if you don't believe me, we'll, we'll just come back and we'll just say, fine, screw it. Like honestly, I, I know I sound like my patience is spent, but my patience is spent because we have spent so much time on this. We'll just put the six stalls in, put the three stalls in, put the two stalls in, and we'll just move forward. But it's lame. It's just not as good. It's just, it just doesn't feel as good. You know what I'm saying?
I guess I'm confused because in the analysis, it says that there's provided four hundred fifty-three parking space, but then required is four hundred and eighty-five, so that's thirty-two.
Four hundred and sixty-three. That's why I'm not quite sure. If you look, if you look down at our tab, if Jacob could zoom in, and Jacob and I spent hours upon hours going through this, if you look right down there, it says stalls required, and here's all of our calculations, and stalls provided. We're eleven stalls short. There's all of our calculations. How we get to our numbers. And if you add all of that up, basically what we're proposing is eleven divided by four sixty-four is two percent of the total stalls that we're proposing be joint. And that's it. Four sixty-four total required, four hundred fifty-three provided, eleven shared. That's what we're asking for.
Can I ask a question? How much retail slash restaurant square footage was required?
Twenty-five thousand.
So when I add up those buildings, it doesn't equal that? It's six thousand square?
The, the, we're not counting in the additions that you did. We're not counting the building on the opposite side, the, the one across one hundred south.
On the other side?
On the other side of the street, you include that building also, which is four thousand?
You include that in the twenty-five thousand?
You know what? So we, we have two plans. We have one that has parking and one that has landscape. Can you hand me the one that has landscape, Aaron? In one of them, in one of them, they are twenty-five. I think you guys have that one in your staff report as well. If you guys added in that one, they are twenty-five. If you guys added on the, on this one, on the color one, then you, they're, they're short by five hundred or something like that.
We have twenty thousand square feet on everything from this side of the, of, what is this road here called? I forget.
I added them and I got nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy.
The discrepancy, McKay, on that one, and that one, yeah. On that one, in one map that you submitted, that's six thousand square feet, six thousand and a little bit. And in the landscape one, that one's seven thousand. So they're different.
My point is-
No, no, I'm talking about the, the maroon building.
Oh, is what?
That one. So in, in this one, you, you submitted is six thousand one hundred forty-one. And in this one is seven thousand. So there's a difference of one thousand about, nine hundred.
My, my point is, is that this building over here, we can fully park and it makes up the difference. To get to our twenty, it's twenty-five thousand total square feet. We just didn't think it was fair to calculate this building that's separated by a road as a part of a shared parking agreement. You know what I mean? So we just approached that like it's its own development, it's its own pad, and then all of this.
I still don't, when I add up the numbers, I still don't get to a total of twenty-five.
I, I tell you what the difference is.
Thousand square feet.
If you allow, if you allow me, McKay?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
So, on this one, so I have two, but on this one, we are short about one thousand because he's not, he's giving this area here as open space. If he does that's open space, yes, he doesn't mean the twenty-five thousand, it's a twenty-four something.
But if he doesn't do open space, he was going to put parking stalls in there, so it was still reduced.
No, but, so that's, that's the question.
So that's a thousand feet less than he's supposed to have.
You are off eight hundred square feet, short of twenty-five thousand. In the other one, the landscape one that you guys have, if you guys take a look at that, the building, those are set all the way to right here, and instead of having six thousand, it's seven thousand. In that one, he does.
I think that this, what, I, I need to look at it, but it may be, somehow the internal little calculation on this tab is probably a carryover from an old plan. What, what our civil engineer has calculated down here is accurate. And so, in fact, I told you-
So one part of your plan is right and one part of your plan isn't?
No, no, it's accurate. It is accurate.
I'm just asking because I can add. And when I'm adding them, it doesn't add up.
Are you adding up this?
Yes.
Yeah. This, this right here, these number, well, I didn't do those numbers. I don't know who did those. That's Jacob. That's not me. Jacob put those in there. So I don't know where those came from.
No, but McKay, if you go on your numbers right there, for example,
Jacob could put up to help him out, but this building right here, retail pad D, you're showing me right here, three thousand seventy-five, three thousand seventy-five for retail, three thousand seventy-five for, for restaurant. If you add that, that's the six thousand. So it is short one thousand.
So you're saying six plus?
Six thousand, so you have six thousand right here.
Sixty-one forty-seven. Yeah, I, so short a thousand based off of the, the building across the street?
No.
No.
Just that one building.
Do I have twenty thousand square feet? Does that all add up to twenty thousand square feet? My building across the street is five thousand square feet.
Okay, that's, yeah, I don't have that one. So in the, in, in this one, because of course, in this one, you didn't show it. On this one, it's a little shorter.
That's not what we're, that's not what-
Correct, 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 correct.
We're not making an application for that side. We're not talking about that.
Correct. I think what the planning commission is saying, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but you guys are trying to make sure that there's twenty-five thousand total, right?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, and what I'm telling you is there's twenty thousand square feet over here and there's a five thousand square foot pad on the other building, which-
And when I add the numbers from your plan, I don't get twenty-five thousand?
If you add all this up right here, that all adds up to twenty thousand square feet.
And retail pad D does match.
That's not reflected on your map.
And then-
So on the north, so on the north side, Commissioner Harding, so on the north side, so those, on the south side, there's a twenty thousand, and then there's another building that's part of it. They committed for twenty-five thousand. So it's not on this current map. It's across, just on the north side of the, the street.
Right, I understand I have to add five thousand, but the numbers that are on the plan today-
This is what, this is accurate. This is what each one of those buildings are. They come to twenty thousand square feet.
I, I agree. I just added them all together and I'm still a thousand square feet short.
You're adding this right here together?
Yeah, you're eight hundred and eighty-eight square feet short.
No, it's not. If you go twenty-five hundred four times is ten, right?
Yep.
And then if, you just use nineteen twenty-eight, call it two. And nineteen twenty-five, call it two, that's four. Call three and three makes six. Ten plus four plus six is twenty.
Great math.
Okay. Rounding slightly up on the one, two, and rounding slightly down on the other two. It's, I, I don't know if the number's exactly twenty thousand, but I'm gonna-
It's exactly twenty.
Yeah, it's twenty.
Yeah, we, like I said, I mean, we've, we've, we've poured through this thing a million times, and so-
So no, that, that one is twenty thousand.
So I'll just recount it. We, we are banking on the idea that the one on the other side is five thousand.
Right, but, but the application, which is fine. We've got more than enough space to have a five thousand square foot pad on the other side. If you need us to also provide that, I'm more than happy to provide that. But, but the reason why we have not shown that, and that was agreed to by us, that it's just its own little deal that needs to be parked by itself on the other side and that we're going to focus on this block, so.
Well, my question is like, where there was the restaurant, where we don't know what that commercial is, so we're not sure on the parking. So when you say you're for sure you have the parking, how do we know? Because then we would limit what has to go in there.
Yeah, and, and that's exactly what, that's exactly what this whole thing right here is. Is this, is this whole thing says total stalls per code. One point seven-five per one bedroom plus two stalls per two-bedroom. This gives me the total amount of residential parking I have to have. Each pad breaks down exactly, restaurant, retail, restaurant, retail, restaurant, retail, restaurant, retail. Calculations required, stalls provided. Again, if, if we wanted, if the Planning Commission just said, McKay, we don't want you to have patio space. Like, just forget it. We'd rather have the eleven stalls. Fair enough. If, if that's what you guys determine, fair enough. I, I, that's not what we think is the best plan, but we'll add those six stalls back in. We'll add the three stalls back up here and the two stalls over there. And I think what the city will get is a bummer of, of something, in fact, Jacob, can I, is there a way that I can plug my computer into this?
Can I ask you real quick while you're doing that? McKay, so you've got that little chart there that shows the eleven that it's short, but the words next to the numbers, it says stall proposed, four fifty-three, stalls required is four sixty-four, stalls, shared stalls is eleven. So are there elevens additional shared stalls or is that misworded?
That's misworded. It should, that should say-
Those are the pink areas.
Joint. I, I don't, the terminology initially had me screwed up. I kept calling them shared. But it's actually joint is the right terminology.
So are they being double counted with?
They're being double counted, that's exactly right.
Okay, so there truly are eleven short stalls. But we're talking two point three-seven percent of the requirement in exchange for additional open space. Which, which, okay, thank you.
And on top of that, when we calculate, and again, this goes back years ago to, to when Daniel and I were kind of conceiving all of this stuff, but, but when, whenever we do apartments, point two-five of our total required stalls are visitor, always. In every municipality, it's usually point two-five. So if you take, if you take our four hundred, I want to say it's three hundred and-
Sixty-four?
Sixty-four residential, is that what it is?
Forty-six, sorry.
Three forty-six times point two-five, that's eighty-six visitor stalls. So we look at that and we're like, are eighty-six visitors going to be there twenty-four seven? No. And, and so, we have four of eleven stalls out of here that the retail and the visitors can actually share.
Where would those visitor stalls be roughly?
Right in here, though.
Can I, can I add something because that, that pertained me? So in reality, in reality, that's a number that someone who builds apartments can, can tell you. However, our code, this is what our code said. Our code required, for example, right now for some apartments or, or townhomes, required, Jacob, will you give me a chance so I can look at them? It requires two parking stalls per unit plus point thirty-three of visitor. Okay, that's what our code says.
That's Pleasant Grove code?
That's Pleasant Grove code, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Because we argued this when we looked at this the first time.
Correct, so what we did on this one is we reduced it from two parking stalls, point thirty-three, to one point seventy-five. Whether we include that one as visitor or not, but the code does not require visitor for McKay. For, sorry, for McKay, for this project. So we're not saying you need to provide one point five and point twenty-five needs to go to visitor. If the applicant decides to do it like that, that's up to the applicant. The code is just saying one point seventy-five for every one-bedroom apartment. Okay? So when we, when we were working on this parking situation, because we did reduce it, it was, it was a recommendation of the planning commission at that time. The planning commission at that time considered that one point seventy-five was appropriate for one-bedroom apartments. For a two-bedroom apartments, they kept the, the requirement at two. Whether the planning commission at that time decided, hey, you know what? One point five is enough. And then at point twenty-five, that's a, that's a different story, right? But we don't have a specific requirement like in other codes or other zones that we say, this is required plus this extra per, per visitor. That's up to the designer or the applicant to decide how much visitor is going to put right there. Unfortunately, our code does not require any visitor in this zone. To just, it's super narrow, in fact, sorry.
When we wrote the code, we didn't parse out visitor parking, but it was included in the calculation.
Practically speaking, it's fair to assume that some of the spaces will be for visitors and some will be for residents.
That's right. And so the logic is, is that we're going to have twenty-five thousand square, or in this block, twenty thousand square feet of retail that after a certain hour is going to be completely vacant and is not going to be back open until ten o'clock. And so we actually have, from a visitor standpoint, an abundance of parking that is going to sit empty during certain times of the night. And so that's where, for us, we look at that and we say, we would rather have, you know, if we're talking about two percent of the total stalls, we, we would rather take those eleven stalls, add more of this open space and the, and the patio space for the restaurants just because it's tight. We don't, we don't have enough of it. So I'll just, unless you have any questions, I just was going to show you this. And I, I'm sure you have other questions, but this is, this is basically, this will give you an idea of, the patio's on the right, and we'll zoom back around. But this is what we have right now for Beaumont. And the whole restaurant, the whole thing is not Beaumont. It's, a portion of it is, is obviously retail. And we have a couple other tenants that we're planning on bringing in. But for right now, Beaumont is the one that's guaranteed, but-
Do you own anything else besides Beaumont that's going in?
So, do we own anything else?
Or do you know of?
Our partners are also, so our partners in Beaumont are also the owners of Pizzeria Lamone. And so we have been talking to them about bringing in a Lamone, but we don't have a signed lease or anything yet. But if we did, then we would put-
Is that related to Sid Lamone?
Different spelling.
You can kind, this is, looks like it's buffering. But the idea here is, you can see, we're setting up a wall off the back. We want to have fires that kind of light up the back, gathering spaces. It's, it's, you know, if you've ever been to Beaumont Bakery, it's a little bit of an experience. So we're trying to create an outdoor experience here. And that's, that's, at the end of the day, that is all we're trying to accomplish with this, and-
So really quick, does this rendering include, so looking at the, the site plan right now? Looking at the site plan, and you mentioned that there were six parking stalls right there that you wanted to eliminate. Does this rendering reflect those six or without the six?
Without it. You would, wherever that arbor is with all the fire pits and everything against the brick would be, Without it. You would, wherever that arbor is with all the fire pits and everything against the brick would be, that's my six stalls. Yeah. So.
I think at the end, and you can correct me if I'm wrong McKay, cause this is your time. What the proposal, if I boil it down and I get to the bottom of the proposal from, that we have today in front of us, the conditional use where the applicant is saying, hey, I think I can park it. And, and that's an administrative decision, right? That, that won't even come to the planning commission. We'll counter them and, and if we uh, crash, then we have other venues that we can solve the situation. But I think the request today then, if we boil it down, is, it goes to, is the planning commission willing in as a conditional use to take eleven parking stalls from the retail and allocate them toward the residential or double counter them? That's it. Is, is that correct?
That's it. Just looking to double count them and actually, like I said, the, the effect of that is, all we're looking for is this open space. Or not, well, I guess by default it's open space, but is the patio space on this pad and on the other pad? And then those other two stalls that are back up against the building. That's all we're trying to accomplish.
Otherwise, like I said, those six stalls go in there and you, I mean, we, you can imagine, it's just a tot, it's just a totally different experience. We've designed this building, can't, and I don't know why it's, it's, you know, buffering and having, it's not working well. But we've designed this and so, you know, as you're coming around over here, we, we've got, you can't really tell, but that's, you know, that's massive glass. Trying to take advantage of the views, you know, over here. Try to take advantage of those views that, that will basically open up onto a patio, looking back up at Tim, but anyway.
I, I see what you're trying to do and I agree. And I was part of the original discussions. And we moved a lot around to allow this to happen. And every time you come in, you ask for more, it feels like, on our side, just to be honest. Cause we, we modified codes, we changed some things to allow this to go in. We were hoping, we need the tax revenue base. We got apartments at this point.
Well, I don't, I don't know what to say to that other than I'm an owner of this restaurant and I'm bringing it here. And so it's, in fact, what initiated all of this is they showed up through our broker, were interested in the site, didn't have the ability to expand. So we said, we want you here, we'll buy the restaurant. And so we bought out the majority owner who didn't have the ability to expand the, the brand. And so now we are bringing it here. It's at no small cost that we were trying to do this. And so, you know, we've, with that, we hope on the pad, just pad A, Lamone, we hope that we can bring them in. They're, they're wanting to do like an express concept that's a little bit, that's smaller, but. And we have two or three other tenants that, that we're bringing in. So, I mean, what I can tell you is that our apartment plat technically is, is in. This will be going in at the exact same time. And so, um, what we're trying to, the reason why I'm here to you, in front of you today is because if I'm turning this in, I gotta know if I have to have those stalls included in there or not. If, that's why I say, if you guys don't want it, I think it's bad for the development, but if you don't want it, that's okay. We'll just, we, we've gotta march forward. We have to move forward. I don't think it's good for it, but.
How much do you want it?
How much do I want it?
How much do you want that open space?
Are you, are, is, are we horse trading?
No, no, I'm asking a serious question.
Restaurant owner, I want it bad.
So what, so what besides, well, if you don't give it to me and you don't approve this today, I'm just gonna take that away. It just sounds like a threat. What are you willing to give?
Um, about four and a half million dollars in revenue that comes out of Beaumont a year. That's, that's the, that's the, we do four point two million dollars a year in revenue in, in Mill Creek right now.
In Mill Creek.
In Mill Creek. So, I mean, if you're looking for tax dollars, it's about as good as it gets without having a Chick-fil-A or an In-N-Out Burger.
Bring in Costco, come on.
And, and the courtyard does make sense for that type of restaurant. I can see why you'd want that. We're also looking at, and I drive through that neighborhood all the time. I'm around there. There are cars parked on the road. Right now, you're underparked from what I see.
Well, and I got a call from the city the other day on that, just so you know, we've notified, we don't own those over there. We've notified them. Number one, it's been a combination of construction workers and all different types. But we've called them up and we've been like, what the flip is going on? Because this is not the arrangement. This is not. And I think people just, they see an open, they see an open muddy field and they just, and it, I, I'm sorry, I didn't even know about it. It was brought to our attention the week before last. I talked to my partner, my partners all over it. We're shutting all of that down.
And I know how empty fields fill up. I'm a construction worker and I deal with that all the time. But, uh, so you can see our concern when we see an issue already.
No doubt.
And then we're talking about compounding it and sharing spaces. Those restaurants are open till ten o'clock at night, retail till nine, ten o'clock at night, a lot of it. Your people that come home from work are home before nine, ten o'clock. So that is the conflict. From five o'clock until ten o'clock, I see that being a major issue.
And, and it.
And that's the peak hours for your restaurant.
Sure, and it may be. Beaumont's a little unusual. We close at seven, but we're changing that. We're gonna stay open till, till eight or nine. And I, you know, again, I, I think that we'll be, I think that we're gonna be parked just fine. But I recognize that. I get it, especially when it's, I mean, the timing of them parking over in that dirt lot is not good. I wish that.
And, and like I said, you know, if you're, if you're peak hours and you overpark, I know, I'm one that if I can't find a place to park, I'm not gonna go to the restaurant. I'm gonna go somewhere else.
Without question.
I, I deal with, with issues. And so we don't wanna put in a really nice place and then have it underserved because people are frustrated too. So we're trying to see all those balances and that's what we're looking at.
I totally get it. And, and one of the thing, one of the benefits that we do have, and, and it would have to be on Jacob's, pull up Jacob's computer again where you see the lot. We have three different, we have actually three different pads that are right next to each other. A, B, and then C, which is being built as a part of the apartment. So as part of the apartments, we're getting four thousand square feet that's coming online right away. We actually think we have a restaurant for that. We can't disclose who it is. I don't have a side screen. But what, but what I'm saying is, you, you do get shared parking between those three uses. Those three uses, when one's busy, the other one may be slow. And so you're dealing with a combination of, you know, a hundred and nineteen stalls as opposed to this guy has this many, this guy has that many. They're able to, we can cross park across the retail, which helps.
We should find a way to put more stalls behind your gates and I just don't see how to do it.
Uh, we've, we've tried every which way we can to do that. I, I don't disagree.
And so the, sorry, uh, so the other thing that, you know, a little bit of PTSD that some of us have with other developments that have gone in, you know, with the promise of retail and residential. And it was residential a lot more than what was expected and then the retail's slowly creeping along. And so that definitely, that plays into this discussion as well. Because we, if you could just put in the retail first and have that all good to go and everything, and we could say, yep, this is the, the, these are the numbers and then put in the apartments, you know, that would be the, from some of our perspective, that'd be the ideal.
Yeah.
Right? But knowing where you come from and, and, you know, ROI and stuff like that, it's, it's completely understandable. So we, we like to have things ironed out.
I totally get it, Jeffrey. And, and that's why we've, and I, I, I don't have the renderings on the apartments to show you right now, but they're actually, they look a billion times better than what's built behind us. We're not happy with what was built behind us. Um, the, the retail portion of it is its own standalone building. It's attached to the apartments, but it has no apartments above it. It's, looks like its own restaurant there. The building moves up and down in places, which is gonna be really interesting and unique. So we are getting about four thousand square feet with the apartments right away that we're building, cause it's attached and it's a part of it. And the Beaumont plat is gonna be going in at the exact same time that our apartments are. So if you look at it that way, we've got eight thousand square feet that's coming in at the same time that we do our apartments. So if, I don't know, if, if you wanted to make that a caveat or something like that, I mean, we're, I, I, I'm open to something like that because again, we're the owner of that restaurant. We fully intend on bringing them in. The only difference is they're just financing differences. It's this bank and that bank and, and those different things.
I don't know anything about banks.
That's right.
All right, any other questions for McKay?
So with, can we pull back up the, the parking plan?
While you do that, of the eleven stalls we're talking about, I'd almost say throw in those two that are inconvenient and packed in. And from the path of least resistance, those would be the least desirable and last to be filled probably. And so if it truly is a pain in the butt, you know, you've got them there and people could still park there. But, uh, then maybe your shortage is nine instead of eleven.
Which ones are you talking about Dustin? The two on the side?
Two over here.
You mean leave those, you're saying?
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering, compromise?
Since it's not, since they're not actually.
It's not gonna cost you open space or, or patio. And if people use them, great, it's two more stalls and all it is is people learn by experience to not park there if it's a hassle or they do if it's needed.
I would be totally fine with that. The reason, again, we, we pulled those two stalls off because we just thought as you pull into that drive, you'll see the side of the building there. We wanted to plant trees and just kinda scale it down. We could probably.
More attractive.
Yeah, it's just aesthetically more attractive, but if you, if it's more valuable to have the stalls, we can figure out some creative thing architecturally to do over there or still get trees or still get something built over there. That, that I'm less worried about than the other, than the other nine.
Daniel, did you, oh.
Yeah, uh, no, I just, just, just saying that. I think I, I boil it down in the right way. We're saying, we, we can see a site plant right now. But just my recommendation is just, we, we don't know if that's gonna happen or not. We hope it happens, right? I mean, we've been hoping for, for, for quite some time. So at the end, just think about this, uh, as my recommendation to the planning commission is, are, are you guys willing to allocate eleven parking stalls from the retail to the residential? Double counted them. Because again, if we look at lines and stuff like that and it looks pretty and, or, I mean, just by looking at that and the parking for, for the residents, it's gonna be a little complicated in the, in the way that, for example, can, can you hand me the, the, so you can stay there McKay and then, for example, like just right now, just who, what resident, I mean, it's gonna be a, a challenge by itself. When we do the site plan, when we review the site plan, we'll worry about that. Just to know that these for sure are residential, I think if I wanna use Beaumont, if I wanna go there, I probably'll park right there. So we have to work on that. And that's, that comes as we work on the site plan.
That's part of what I was gonna ask too on that, because you're gated here, right?
That's right.
And gated there.
That's right.
And so your residents that live here, I assume there's entrances to the building on this side.
These are all walk-up units.
Right.
So like, these look like townhomes. And then.
And so residents are likely gonna park on both sides, right? Even though it's allotted for.
You're right, Todd.
And then you've got, but your retail is not gonna park back here.
No.
So, I mean, you're, we're gonna have a problem with being underparked if everything there is successful in this strip.
Well.
Because, I mean, if I'm a resident and I have the choice between parking there or there, even if I live there, I'm probably parking right there.
Well, what, what we'll do is this. So the reason why we have this weird thing is this is one of those untoward consequences of code that was intended to accomplish a certain thing.
Totally understand that, but I'm saying, you're not maxing out your resident parking back here in practicality.
No.
Like you are on stalls, but in practicality, they're gonna park out here, which means we're gonna have an issue already. And then you're asking us to take away more designated retail. I, I mean, more parking, I.
Well, let me, let, let me just walk you through how I think things are gonna park at the end of the day, because this is absurd. No one's gonna, no one's doing that. Like this is, this is literally, you have to, you have to understand, this parking plan is literally for me to demonstrate to you, I meet code based off this weird twenty-five foot buffer thing. I get why we have it, this belt and suspenders. But practically speaking, you would never do that other than just require me to meet code. So I'm here today saying, I meet code. Once I meet code, what will happen is these residents, or the, sorry, the people who, who, uh, eat here are gonna park right here, just like that. And all this is gonna go to residential. It's no man's land. All these eight stalls are gonna be, that's gonna be retail, practically speaking. And then all of this is gonna be residential. That's just what's gonna happen practically speaking. And it makes sense. Now, this will be residential because they're gonna have front doors there and these all have front doors and these all, and these all have, well, these ones don't. But these all have front doors. So practically speaking, that makes sense.
You're saying these ones don't?
No, not all of these don't, or do, sorry. But these do. And so basically, you know, this all makes sense cause it's a front door. Everything kind of from here all the way down, that doesn't. But all this other stuff is gonna work. So in practicality, what will happen is we go in and we demonstrate what we have to do to meet code with this weird buffer. And then knowing that we have all of the stalls that we have to have, they actually are going to get allocated slightly different. That's just practically speaking the way.
Yeah, but I still think you're gonna be, you're gonna have a lot of congestion through here because you're not gonna fill this up.
Well, though, I mean, from a residential standpoint.
Right.
We'll, we'll mark these. We'll just say this is all marked as residential, marked as residential, and then this will all be retail. But we feel confident, we wish that, you know, it'd be nice to have more back there certainly, but we have more than enough to at least have one, more than one stall in the back.
So, so to go off of what Todd was talking about, and you kind of addressed it. So with these parking, parking stalls right here. These, there are sufficient number of parking stalls here and here to address entry into.
All of it.
All of that.
Yeah.
Is that what, do you foresee, like what, addressing Todd, is there a reason for residents to park over here?
For sure.
Or is it easier for them to access the other floors from back here?
Where's the access to the building and how's the building accessed? That's the question.
Oh, got it. So we'll have, we'll have several different access points. Like, obviously, we've got two different buildings. You're gonna have, this is the clubhouse. So, so we've really tried to make everything that you see off the front, even though from, basically, this has no retail in it. So from here all the way down to here is no man's land from a retail standpoint. Nobody's gonna park here and go eat at any of those spots.
Unless they're counting their steps.
Unless they're counting their steps.
Or they have a brand new car.
That's right. And so, and so that's why, you know, these'll, they'll just swap, right? We're just gonna swap. But all of this will end up being likely, are, this is where we envision all of our visitor stalls to go. If you're a visitor, you're really gonna be parking in through, some of them, and, and residents too. But you'll have, everyone will be able to park back in through here, have access to the building and two locations off the back. And then you'll, you'll have access, this is the lobby and clubhouse right here, and then you'll have another front door access over here somewhere. So you'll be able to get into the building.
Here's a devil's advocate. How about if we cut that building short and add about ten stalls right there?
Uh, we'd have to go up. You just pull them in and then put them up top.
No, just eliminate a few apartments and then that way we know we're definitely parked and we're parking stalls in the back.
We're here to demonstrate we can do all of it and park it adequately. And I'm just saying, if you, you know, if you don't want the open space, that's fine. Like, uh, that's not the right way of wording it. It's, we wanna get these patios. If we can get the patios, great.
And then, you know, this is all concept too, until we have an actual plot plan and exact buildings and everything else, so.
Well, we're, I, I can tell you now, I'm not changing this. Like, we're, we are, we, we have got everything. I know that we can build a five thousand square foot pad, six, whatever, I don't know the exact number on this one. That one's baked in, this one is baked in, this, there, I mean, there, this is, this is our plan. And we know that it works. We know that it's marketable. I know that it's bankable. I know I can get loans on this, this, this. I, I know that we can build and develop everything the way that it is and it is parked and it works and it functions.
All right, any other questions for McKay?
Oh, we beat him up enough today.
All right, thanks McKay, appreciate it. All right, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to the public. If anyone wants to come forward and come to the podium and just make sure you state your name, please.
My name's Jackie Miller.
Wait till you're at the mic.
Okay, my name's Jackie Miller. I'm the owner of the property with the stop sign on it. Um, so we have an interior design firm there and then you can see the proposed areas brought up to us in two different locations. We've been kind of following this the entire time, um, from the time that we built the building, sold the property in June of two thousand nineteen to McKay, but directly behind us where all of that parking is. We've been watching this process. Um, in fact, before we sold the property, because of what was being proposed and our concerns of the impact of all of that, those residences on our parking, um, we have an agreement with McKay that there will be a privacy fence that he'll provide that will get built all the way around us. It would have a crash gate that would allow emergency services to go through the back um, into that parking area there. I don't know if that's still part of the plan or not. Um, but the concern even back in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen with what was being proposed was so concerned that before we sold the property, we worked in the agreement on the fence. The, I would ask that you operate with extreme caution. I've watched this go up, down, over and under. Um, and, um, I, I think it's still very fluid from the sounds of what I'm hearing. I feel like, um, the shared stalls are a concern. What happens during peak hours is a huge concern. As was mentioned, residents are home and restaurants are still open. We're short parking spots. We've been short parking spots since day one. And I'm not sure that I can fit two cars into one stall, um, not even little ones. And so the idea of it being a shared stall is bunk. It's, it can't be shared. So when you are only at one and a half cars per apartment and I've never driven a half a car, I realize that's the numbers. I'm just not sure how it actually works. I feel like the residential apartments en masse shouldn't. I feel like the residential apartments en masse shouldn't be approved until there is agreements on what's gonna happen with the retail space. Because as a retailer, my biggest concern when this started to happen was, hey, wait a minute, I'm a retail space, and I'm ending up in a residential area. How did that happen to me and my building? And so, I've, I, I would say that personally, I feel very protective about getting those retailers in there, so that those of us that have committed to Pleasant Grove City aren't stuck in an area with a residential building surrounded, or with a commercial building surrounded by residences, and our parking is in a constant state of being overrun. We were concerned about it, DoTERRA was concerned about it, all of those parties are still concerned about it. The residential will take over the commercial based on what I can see. And if I was a retailer coming in, or a restaurant coming in, that would be a huge concern for me, because we've heard it a number of times mentioned tonight, that if I can't find a place to park at a restaurant, I'm going somewhere else. So where is the success for that restaurateur? It's not there. The parking isn't going to be monitored. So if the residences completely move over into the retailer space, who's gonna fix it? The retailer's gonna take a hit on it, and the apartment dwellers are gonna be just fine. So I feel like the parking conflicts reduce the business opportunities and the commercial development, that those of us that are commercial projects in that area, then we suffer. And we've committed to Pleasant Grove City already, and we're here, and we're, we're adding to your tax base, and so, you know, please be, this is a big deal. I get that. Mine is a big deal to me. And getting chased out of it with all of those residences, and seeing what's going on there, is a huge concern. When these conversations initially started way back when, that, it was a huge question of, how do we even get emergency equipment into this scenario up here? How are they getting in? How are they getting out? If we have such a gigantic parking lot going, how does that work if something bad happens in those areas? Are those residences truly safe? Have we taken that into account? Is it still a conversation that's happening, or has it been resolved? I'd love to hear that it has been resolved. I haven't heard anything about it. So, again, I, this isn't against McKay or what he's trying to create here. I see an unwillingness to, I thought it was total common sense. And I get it, there's an ROI on how many doorknobs are in there, but take out a few apartments and add a few more parking spaces, make this a more equitable arrangement for the retailers and for the apartments. And we're concerned. I'm concerned. So I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else come forward? Just remember to state your name when you get to the microphone. Thank you.
I'm Denise Trickler, and I'm just a concerned resident. I don't live here, but I do have kids that live down in that area, and I have to say that parking is ridiculous, and because you're not even thinking about the fact that you have to have some handicap parking in there, and that takes away from a lot of people, too. Because just, we're not, there's not that many handicap people that are going to be in there all the time, and apartments is, they never, even a one-bedroom apartment, I think the code needs to be changed, because a one-bedroom apartment is most likely going to have two vehicles. A, a two-bedroom apartment could have four vehicles. You have to take all of that into concern. If the code needs to be changed, to say that there needs to be more parking for these, these residences, the code needs to be changed. I mean, I don't know how you make one point seven-five cars fit. I don't know. I mean, the, the townhomes that are back behind it are so crowded already and taking over. How are, where are those people that are parking in the empty lot going to park now? Because they don't have enough space. Just, if we need to change the code, we need to change the code, but that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Just an answer to that, we have, we force more parking than most other cities have. Most, even a park less than us, which is
I know, but
Interesting.
I know.
No, but we, we get it, we, yeah. Thank you. All right, any other comments from the public? All right, if not, we will close the hearing from the public and bring it back up to the commissioners.
I don't know what to do on this one. I, I wanna see the tax revenue base. I wanna see the empty lots go away. I don't wanna see us have an issue that is gonna create, you know, we're gonna create something that we don't want. I'm tired of seeing all that vacant lot every day when I drive past that. And we need the tax revenue base in there. The apartment, I mean, the rentals benefit the city, and they bring taxpayers into the city, so I I don't wanna stop it, but I do think we have a parking issue that's, I'm not a hundred percent comfortable with.
With the parking issue, though, whether or not the joint agreement goes forward, I don't think that's gonna resolve anything with the parking issue. Just because of where people are gonna park.
Cuz I know if I had to park back in that corner of the triangle, or park right in front of the building and walk across just that driveline, I'm gonna park in front. Unless I've got a covered stall that keeps the ice off my car, I'm not parking in the back.
Does the gated aspect change that to somebody's, in somebody's mind?
It, it does a little bit when I've got, you know, five thousand dollars worth of tools in the back of my truck, but unless I've got tools in it, then it becomes a moot point anyway.
I mean, I don't drive nice cars, but I still would prefer to be behind a gate if, if it's there.
Especially if I'm a resident.
So I, I think that's the motivator.
And, and I can see that, that would make sense. You've got a little more protection on your car, you're less apt to have issues. If there's cameras in that lot, then if you get, you know, somebody pulls out and hits you, at least you see it, and you don't go put cameras in the front lot and have any effect on it on retail. But you can on the residential. And I know, I know you said this is the baked-in thing, but until something's actually in front of the city, it still has potential to change, you know? I know that's, there's a lot of money, a lot of engineering, and a lot of time goes in to get it to this stage. I'm very aware of that. I'm also aware that I've had things to this stage and had them changed drastically.
Well, we've seen that as a city as well, in other projects.
I've had footings in the ground that have changed and ripped them out of the ground and had them redone because developer wanted to change.
Yeah. So what would you say the consensus is? We have three options, approval, continue, or denial.
I mean, my, my thought is, and I'm gonna use nine instead of eleven, a lot of the conversation is based on peak time usage is gonna be where you're gonna have your, your problem. What is that, five or six to nine? Maybe it's a
Three hour, three to four window.
Window.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't even use five.
Six to ten, six to nine?
Six to nine's probably your window. I don't know, the last time I was, I got home from work before six o'clock, but not everybody's in my world, but you've got a three-hour window. And my guess is, if you're gonna have a problem without those nine stalls, you're probably still gonna have a problem with those nine stalls.
Agreed. And then just make it even more realistic. I mean, out of the work week, you know, out of, out of a week, what days of the week would those nine stalls be an issue? Fridays, how many days?
Fridays are the most.
Fridays, for sure, yeah.
Thursdays, maybe?
I mean, that's reality, is more people go out on Friday and
Sure.
Sure. And then I think there's, there's always an ebb and flow of where cars are and who's in and out, but I, I do think the way it's laid out, if the assumption is real that everybody in the apartments is gonna park in front, whether we have those stalls or not, it's gonna be packed. And, and I hope it is packed for the
It'd be great.
Business owners, I mean...
Great for the city, great for the business owners.
I, I think about Thanksgiving point. I financed a local burger joint that happens to be up there next to a Maverick a dozen years ago, or fifteen years ago, and within a few years there, all the words were, I hate that place, it's too crowded. But guess who still goes there? To all those, I mean, there's probably, what, twenty restaurants in that half-mile radius, and, and yet people still go there, it's busy. So I don't think it drives the restaurateurs necessarily away, but it might drive a few peripheral customers away, but they're still gonna be packed.
They have a lot more anchor businesses that are driving people there that don't have a home right there.
We have residents is the plan to drive people there, rather than the anchor businesses. I'm just talking more traffic patterns and the annoyance of, holy cow, it's busy, and personally, I don't go there to dinner. I, I'm the one who's not interested in going there, but plenty of people do. I think the businesses would be successful. I think it will be crowded no matter what, and I don't know that nine stripes makes a difference.
Can I share some insight into this?
Go ahead, Daniel.
You, you guys have a really hard job. I, I know, I've, I've seen it. And I know the positions you guys are. If I was on that side, this is what I would, this is how I would approach it, I would think. Is this place with that number of, of residential units, is it well-parked? Do I consider it's well-parked? And then I'll answer myself, and I'll go, am I willing to make that worse or lessen it by giving eleven stalls to make it right there? That's how I would think it. So that's why we brought up the one point seventy-five, cuz that's what we require for one-bedroom apartments, and two. That includes visitor parking. That does include visitor parking. So probably the good question I would ask myself is, do I feel like that's enough for the residential? Because residential parking is gonna find its way. So even those eleven, if they're needed, they're gonna end up somewhere else. Whether they're gonna end up in DoTERRA, whether they're gonna end up in the road, and the road, of course, there's no diagonal parking, so there's peril like right now, and that, the whole street is, is filled out with cars. That'd be the question that I would ask.
And on the flip side, oh, sorry, go ahead.
If you've ever been up in Salt Lake on, what is that, Fifth South and about Sixth East, there's a little strip mall out there, and there's a Jimmy John's on the corner, and Jimmy John's is not by end of that parking lot, and they've got a guy that watches that nonstop, and if you park in their parking lot, walk across to Jimmy John's, past the little pylons they've got, they ticket you, and it's eighty bucks a ticket. Ask me how I found out.
That's a sandwich.
I mean, that's, that's kinda thing that, if, if it becomes really push and shove, that's what's gonna end up starting to happen.
Well, but any problem within the development is the developer's problem, right?
Sure.
But any parking on the street, we're gonna make it a problem. That's gonna be the city's problem.
Well, and, and neighbors, yeah, as well as neighbors' problems.
Yeah, we don't wanna, you know, we've, you've got a neighbor there, we don't wanna encroach on them either. We wanna try and make business. I don't know if any of these people drive business to their door or not. Not likely.
Well, and just looking at what's coming, kitty corner with the roof, what's gonna happen with there? So parking, they could, they could park at the Ruth Theater and walk across the street to go to, to dinner, so
Yeah.
So hypothetically, that would reduce some of the parking woes, hypothetically.
If, if the roof allows that, or if they put signs up saying, it's hard not to, but again, that's an, that's a developer agreement.
Just, just thinking about
Yeah.
Reality. I don't, I don't think we'd walk that far in Utah. I don't think anyone's parking at the roof and walking across the street. But I don't, I don't think that anything before today, whether we accept the joint, the agreement as proposed, or as, it's not gonna fix the problems we're talking about.
Right.
Agreed.
That's why I agree.
I mean, and so, so The Beaumont looks better with the patio, it does.
Yeah, it does.
We know we draw more people, which is that oxymoron.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't have a problem approving it today. I think we're gonna have an issue there just because we're putting in, how many units? Hundred ninety-four. Hundred ninety-four units?
Yeah, two hundred.
I, I don't know that anything that we're talking about today is gonna
Make a difference.
Make a difference, and, and what's gonna happen there. I think it's gonna be, I, I think there's plenty of parking there, if residential max out behind the gate parking.
It'd be nice to legislate people's actions.
Yeah, and, and we're not gonna do that, and so, I mean, those nine stalls, eleven stalls out front, I just, I just don't see it as making a difference.
It, it would be nice, we could force them to park back, but it's just not gonna happen.
So we either kick the can down the road for two weeks, or, no? I mean, what's gonna change, what's gonna change in two weeks?
Yeah, that's
That's, that's just it.
The only thing that might change is if you had a confirmed plan for everything, and I mean, they say it's confirmed, like I said, but that's the only thing that would change. Is we have possibly, you know, a, a full submittal as to exactly what is happening. Right now, the, it's kind of proposed. That'd be the only thing that continuing would do, would be just confirm the restaurants, confirm the apartment sizes and retail sizes.
I don't think we're getting that in two weeks.
I don't think so either.
No.
I think you're gonna, what, what's on the papers, pretty much what you're gonna get, because I'm looking at it, and on a development side, you're not gonna shoehorn anything else in there. You don't have any more space. That triangle in the back makes it awkward to put more cars in it. It's an awkward space back there. You can't get anything more in there than you've got. The only, the only way to reduce, to change the parking is to reduce what's in there somewhere. Either you reduce apartments, or you have what you've got. That's the only choices I see to keep the retail.
Can we reduce the size of the apartment?
I mean, but I think the agreement was, we got twenty-five thousand retail, and they get so many thousand square feet.
Yeah, and that, and that many, and that many, that many doors, that was kind of an agreement. That was over two years ago, and I don't remember the exact details, but that was kind of what it was.
Well, effectively, what I think I heard from McKay is, we either approve it in some way that's agreeable to them, to allow the patio spaces, and whether it's nine or eleven spaces, whatever, or
He loses all the patios, and he gets the stalls that he has to have for code.
Exactly. He moves forward. According to the calculations, he's saying, it works with removing the patio spaces and meeting the code requirement. We just lose the aesthetic benefit of those two restaurants having patio space, but kicking it down the road, or trying to modify anything, we either say yes to this number, or we don't, and they move forward according to code.
Agreed.
All right.
And, and when you, and, again, I just wanna, when we say someone meets it or doesn't meet it, we, we don't know. We, we need to run those calculations when we review it. We, we don't know.
There's still, there's still a review process to go through.
There's a review, so I just did a really quick situation here, and again, I don't have plans, right, but I, we need twenty-five thousand. At least from staff, that's, that's, if you ask us, that's a priority.
Yeah.
Trying to get the other building, and I just did a really quick calculation, by making that building five thousand, then, then they lose one thousand square feet of open space that they need to get it somewhere else, and so on. So, I, I will be cautioned with that, because we, we have, we're, we don't, I will tell you, yes, we're reviewing it right now, yes, we have this much, things can, is, I don't have anything solid at this point.
And do we know that the proposed plan and the gating and everything else, as was mentioned by our, our audience here, that it meets all the fire department? That they can, the fire trucks and the fire department agrees with this? Do we know that at this point or not?
For, for example, I don't, I don't think there can be a crash gate in there. There's no way, 'cause you put a crash gate, then you lose the parking spots right there.
Not from the neighbors, because where that parking is, so there will not be a crash gate, but
Correct.
I mean, obviously, the privacy fence was, was an agreement that was made, and we will expect that, but...
Yeah, well, we're in the, in the review process right now. We do have an application. We only have one application, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Jacob, but we have, in regard of site plan.
Without any problem.
Not plan, but a site plan. So, so I have, thank you McKay, so I have two applications, one for the, for the two apartment buildings, and I have one for the And I have one for the building across 100 South. So that's, that's what I have. And, and I know we've, we're talking about Beaumont Baker and we're, but I don't have an application yet.
Okay.
Okay.
It's understood.
All right, now entertain a motion.
I'll move the planning commission approve the request of McKay Christiansen for the conditional use permit to allow, and I'm gonna modify it, nine joint parking spaces, if that's okay? On property located at approximately 238 South Pleasant Grove Boulevard on property zone The Grove, commercial sale zone and adopting the exhibits, conditions and findings of the staff report. And as modified by the conditions below, the proposal will be subject to a site plan review and approval by staff. Parking facilities will need to be built of impervious materials. Asphalt or concrete is required by engineering. All final planning, engineering and fire department required requirements are met.
I'll second it.
One thing that you didn't mention is if you want those nine parking stalls to be primary use residential, they're gonna, that commercial's gonna borrow or they're gonna be commercial that residential's gonna borrow?
They would have to be a commercial that residential would borrow. Throw that in there.
I'll second that amendment, yeah.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Phillips and a second from Commissioner Fugel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Aye.
We'll have to do a roll call.
All right, we'll do a roll call. Um, I'm not sure how you do that.
Just go down the line.
All right, all right. Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Fugel.
Aye.
Commissioner Patton, aye. Commissioner Redding. Commissioner Martino.
Aye.
Yeah, four to two.
Four, four to two, motion still passes?
Okay, well, so that motion passes?
I, I don't disagree with the motion, but I, I do agree there's a massive problem gonna be happening down there.
Okay, moving on to our fourth item, which is a public hearing to consider a request from Slope Construction to amend City Code Section 10-19 Signs and Outdoor Advertising. The applicant proposes to amend City Code Sections 10-19-7 and 10-19-13 to remove roof signs from the prohibited sign section and to permit roof signs in commercial zones. Daniel, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Uh, what does Jacob say? It's Madame Chairman? Is that how she say it? Or can I just call you Chair?
Whatever you want.
I love Madame Chairman. Sounds really fancy. Can I get the screen on, please? All right, Commissioners, Chair and Commissioners, I mean Madame Chairman and Commissioners. What I have right here, what we have in front of us is already an amendment to a brand-new ordinance that we just created, okay? And, and there's another one coming next, next, next meeting, something like that.
Open the door.
A little bit longer. You know what? This item is gonna go to City Council in March. So we have the language right here for this, but I, I personally, stuff, I don't wanna amend this. The sign is already up. So this is for a, for a roof sign. We told the applicant, hold on, it's not permitted. And he said, let me tell you what I think about your not permitted situation. He went and installed it and we have the sign there already, okay? So, uh, we understand there's a, a, a need for something like this. If you guys take a look at the image, it's, uh, that one, that one right there. So it's, it's a roof sign. So our code right now does not permit roof signs. I remember some time ago, Commissioner, um, Phillips called me and said, hey, is there any chance we can put a roof in my building? In a building? And I said, no, they're not permitted around the time. What we can do is a code text amendment.
That was at a different bank. I don't care anymore.
But, but do you remember that? And then I, I started reviewing and I tell you, hey, there's only one, one sign that I can see like that uh, on Geneva Street, cause I did that research. It's only one. However, the way we're seeing this, this sign is that even though it is a roof sign and the way our code right now is written with our images is that we have a, a, a picture right here. And we're saying that a roof sign cannot exceed the, the peak of the, I'm sorry, the roof line. However, if you guys take a look at this one, this sign exceeds the, 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 the roof line because the roof line is right here. And if you go on the line right here and, and cut this line, kinda like right here, this is above it, okay? So we need to change that. I have an application for another sign for, um, the BMW. So I'm gonna have to go and work on this again. So if you guys allow me, I'm gonna request to continue this item so I can combine both of them. And I'm not changing something today and coming back to you guys and re-changing it again. Even though it's not the same roof sign, but I, I wanna see if I can piggyback together these two ordinances.
What's the, what are the pros and cons? Cause you say that there's a need. Is the need just because they put the sign up already? Or is there a need because this is the way design's going? Is there a need because it's, the market's pushing for it?
It's, we, so there, there's not a, I have an application, right? I have an application from the people who put the sign already. And, um, so we have, we have the need to bring the item in front of you guys.
Okay.
Uh, but again, since it's a legislative situation, you will, I don't have time to bring this to City Council because of the dates. Um, so the, the date that is gonna go is in March. We still have one extra one. So it's not gonna make any, any difference. And me having another amendment to, to, for a sign, I would like to see if I can put them both together to, to do it. I, if, if, if the applicant was waiting on me, on saying, hey, until you pass this, I'm not gonna put the sign. Then I will say, but let's do it as fast as we can, but that sign is already there. We, the way, the way it looks, to be honest with you, I, I, from the design standpoint, I don't think it looks bad. That, that's, that's a, a, a subjective way of saying it. So we are drafting a code where we wouldn't like to have, for example, this sign exceeding this line right here. Which it doesn't. It, it, from the perspective, it does, but when you, we have pictures on it and I don't know, do you put the picture over there, Jacob? Okay. For example, this one, we wouldn't like something like this. This is sticking out from, from right here. The sign from, that, that we have, it stays right here. So I almost approve it administratively, but I thought it's important that we actually take a look at roof sign. And now that we're actually working on this and we opened the item, do you guys have any concerns about, for example, something like this? Something like this? Cause this wouldn't be permitted, even, even in the code, in the, in the amendment, this one wouldn't be permitted either. This would be, this will be, this will be permitted, cause again, the, this sign goes right here. So it doesn't go beyond the, 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 uh, peak of the roof. Um, but if, for example, if you guys are even okay with something like this, we can just permit it then. I think this one also will be permitted because this line, this, this is the peak of the roof. They just put this parapet to, to make it compliant, but if you draw the line right here, it is right at the, at the level. So this one will be permitted, uh, but these two, this wouldn't and this wouldn't either. I, I, you guys, do you guys have any recommendations for me? Do you guys would like to include something like that? Or again, because on the language that I have, does not include this, especially because we won't permit a cabinet signs. I think this, from the planner perspective, it doesn't look good.
Can you, can you go down to the last one? Cause there's two other examples, yeah, those two.
Yeah, that one is, so because of the plane view, it comes from, from down, like we cannot see if this line, for example, exceeds this right, right, right there. So I don't know about that one.
It's almost a cabinet sign anyway.
And that's one for, yeah, and it's a cabinet sign. I wouldn't permit a cabinet sign like that. I think there's a huge difference from this type of sign because the code that we're proposing does not permit it to this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we're, we're not permitting cabinet signs. And we're saying the peak of the roof, in this case, this is not the peak of the roof. This is a architectural feature that they did that ends right here. So the peak of the roof will be this one right here. And if you put yourself like high and look at it at the plane, it doesn't surpass the peak of the roof, so. But if you guys will allow me to continue the item and I'll bring it to you, unless I have an, I don't have an applicant here. And the sign is already there, so I'll bring it to you guys next time with the proposal with the other one, so we'll do it together.
All right. I move that we continue item number four to our next meeting.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to continue it to the next meeting from Commissioner Martino, a second from Commissioner Fugel.
Do we need to say the date?
Yeah, it's, yeah, we have to say specific date.
Uh, to Feb, well.
I'll tell you right now.
Thank you. February.
February 22nd.
22nd, 2024. All right.
To a certain day and then we say, continue to a certain day, February 22nd.
Yeah, continue February 22nd, 2024.
February 22nd, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, that passes. We'll continue it and.
And if I get it right, we, we're the same page, no cabinets, but just, uh, okay, thank you.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from January 25th, 2024.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve them from Commissioner Redding, a second from Commissioner Butler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Those pass and.
I move that we dismiss.
Aye.
So done.